Good evening. I'd like to call the August 16th meeting of the planning board to order. Thank you all for coming. The first thing on our agenda tonight is the minutes from July 12th, July 27th, and August 2nd.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the minutes of July 12th, July 27th, as printed, and the minutes of August 2nd as corrected.
One second.
Any comments from anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? None? Approved. Next on the agenda is approval, not required, plans. Brian, do we have any? There are no A and Rs tonight. Okay. Next thing is a public meeting, the applicant, J.J.E.C. Development LLC Site Plan Review to convert the current bank building with drive-through to fast food restaurant with drive-through located at Four Sandwich Road. BBS Design filed on July 29th, 2016. For the applicant. Oh, notice this, sorry. Paul, step right in a second earlier if you don't mind. Excuse me, we have to...
How many days you can remember?
Yeah, I know.
A public meeting notice was published on August 5th, 2016, and seven of butters were notified by regular mail.
Thank you. Mr. Amen?
Hi, Mr. Fox, members of the board. For your record, I'm Bob Amen, Falmouth Attorney, and I represent the applicant. And with me tonight is Eric Escander here, who is the project manager for the applicant, and also Jason Adams, who is a traffic consultant with McMahon and Associates. Jason tells me he graduated from Falmouth High School some years ago. And Tom Bunker, who is the registered land surveyor for the project. His firm did the site designs and engineering. What you see before you...
John, can you get the lights?
Great.
There we go.
Can you see?
Well enough.
Okay.
Thank you. This is an aerial taken from the town records, an aerial photograph, and it shows the site. And it is this parcel at Four Sandwich Road. It's owned by Eastern Bank. It's the site of a bank branch of Eastern Bank. They are consolidating a couple of branches in Falmouth, and as you know, constructing a new bank closer to downtown. So this is just off the intersection of the T-Ticket Highway or Route 28 and Sandwich The site is a full two acres, and as you can see in the photographs that we've submitted, and the site plan easily accommodates the existing building. Eastern Bank has contracted to sell this property to J.J.E.C. They are the same Dunkin' Donuts franchisee that so successfully developed the site in East Falmouth that was completed a few years ago. They have permission from the planning board and the Board of Appeals to construct a Dunkin' Donuts four and a half miles to the north on Sandwich Road just before Route 151. They also have the Dunkin' Donuts on Main Street across from Ny Road, so downtown. And they have the franchise, all the franchises for that matter in Falmouth, but also the storefront in the Driftwood Plaza, which is very close to this location, and that will be closing. So much of the business for this Dunkin' Donuts would come from existing customers, and a lot of the traffic is actually existing and bypass traffic. The building is actually not intended to be changed, except for, I think it's, one door is being removed and one door is being added to provide a new service entrance for the bank ATM, which will continue to be available just in the lobby, so they won't have to come through the store to service that. So there will be one new door in the front of the building. The drive-through canopy is intended to just stay the way it is. There's no change to the footprint at all. I don't, I think, of course, there'll be a new drive-through window because it's a different design than the bank window, but I'm not sure there are any other new windows. Some existing windows will be glazed because they're, would be looking into back of the store operations. So I'm going to show you the existing site plan. I practiced this a moment ago, and there we go. The existing conditions plan, and, of course, the building and the traffic pattern that comes around the building using the drive-through. When this project was approved, there was an expansion of the bank approved some years ago. Parking was approved all in here. It was not constructed, but that's why the landscaping, which exists all around here, and a stone wall, it's all very attractive from the street. But these areas are grass, and the plan, the proposed plan shows that parking being created, so that the existing parking plus those seven spaces totals 32, which should be very adequate for the, for Dunkin' Donuts. So the existing, this is the existing plan, and this is the proposed layout plan. There are only a few site changes being proposed. Near the street, you can see the line of the existing curb cut widening over here and over here will make turning movements easier for trucks. Over in this area, this is the line, I guess, right there of the existing pavement. It's being expanded a little bit because a bank drive-through only requires three stacking spaces, but a fast food restaurant requires seven. So we're lengthening the area where there can be the lane for cars intending to use the window, the drive-through window, and to have an adequate bypass lane. There's a very little change right here, which is to widen a parking space to be a van-accessible handicap space, so that's an improvement. And then these are the spaces which were approved but never constructed. Interestingly, the distance from the building to the line of the pavement is 40 feet. Plenty of room for a single drive-through lane, and we show the bypass over here. So we have a unusually expansive area around the drive-through, and there are potential, there's a possibility of parking here, there's a possibility of other layout, but this is what we're proposing. And finally, this area presently grass would be changed to pavement, and a dedicated compliant delivery area would be provided for trucks, so that a delivery truck can come in and just pull right in here, back out, and exit the site quite easily. And there will be a new door in this corner of the building to receive deliveries. So there's relatively little site change and almost no change to the existing attractive We have the benefit, and we always appreciate the receipt of the planning staff's report that they give to you in advance of the meeting. So we are able to just go through that if you would like. So let me suggest that. I won't mention the items which apparently no comment is needed. Just go through those that are checked, yes. I'd also like to point out that we have available for you to look at if, as issues come up, the drainage and grading plan, which is here. We have the floor plans showing the changes to the building that are interior that I don't think you're that interested in. We have exterior elevations. We also have a plan that shows the turning movements for a large delivery truck. All of those have been submitted to the board, although the turning movement plan and also a landscaping plan have only been submitted in the last couple of days for which, and the landscape plan today, for which we apologize, but we didn't have it, and I know that staff needs time to look at those things. Well, the first open item is, has to do with coastal ponds. It says in the Green Pond Coastal Overlay District, it's actually just about in the Little Pond District. The line crosses right at Locust Field Road. Many of the, many properties that are in the Great Pond Overlay District are actually going to be hooked up to the sewer, all, many of those in Maravista, as a result of the Little Pond Services District. So there's going to be an improvement to Great Pond, and of course, to Little Pond. The proposed use at 27 proposed fast food restaurant seats under Title V only requires 540 gallons of sewage per day. And this is a two-acre site. The, Tom Bunker just mentioned to me that the Zone 2 requirements would allow by right on a two-acre site eight bedrooms, which would be 880 gallons per day. One could have a restaurant by right on this site if it didn't have a fast food drive-through pickup. It's B2, you can have a Class 3 restaurant by right. If you only have 16 seats in that restaurant, it would be as many gallons per day as what this fast food restaurant requires. So we think that this is an extremely small amount of development in terms of Title V flow, in that, given the limited development on a two-acre site, that the Great Pond Overlay District should not be a concern. It is true that a very tiny bit of the lot is in an endangered species habitat, as it turns out. It's only this triangle in this area is so mapped by natural heritage, and this area of the lot is wooded, and we're not proposing to do anything to that. So although your staff report lists it as an open item, I don't think the wildlife corridor is an issue at all. Flood zone is listed as an open item, but it is in Zone X, that is, means it's not in a flood hazard zone, neither velocity zone or an A zone, not even, well, no zone that's a special flood hazard area at all. We are making some changes to topography, as shown on, on the plan, to accommodate the drive-through, but not much. And Tom Bunker can address that if you wish. We have submitted a landscape plan. Now, I don't have that on a screen to show you, but almost all of the landscaping that's proposed is existent. There are, there's a tree that's in this area that's actually going to be replanted nearby, and then one to be removed. There are foundation plantings and plantings along these areas in here, but there's very little new planting required. The building, you know, it's important to note, is set back 90-some feet from the street. In this area, it's 70 or so feet. Over here, from, from this area, and the next lot up is also zoned business too, by the way, though not being used for business, to my knowledge. This is 200 feet to the building, so there's not much impact on butters. But anyway, we have a landscaping plan, which I'm sure when it's reviewed will be satisfactory. I'm going to skip traffic mitigation. I'll just come back to it to mention the parking. With 27 seats, you're supposed to have one parking space for each seat in a fast food restaurant. It also is a provision that says not less than 10 spaces for each station. I guess station means place you would pay. One would be the drive-through, of course. If there were two inside, that would make it three, so the bylaw seems to say you'd need 30 spaces. That's, don't need more than that, I don't think. But we are showing 32 spaces. There's plenty more. You could have more parking, but we don't need it. I mentioned already the access, and that we have a truck turning diagram that we've submitted, and the circulation seems to work, work well. Tom Bunker has prepared drainage calculations, and as we've submitted that information, as I mentioned, it's on the plan that I can show you. We do need a special permit from the Board of Appeals for a fast food restaurant. The property is subject to a special permit that allowed the bank when it was constructed and then changed, but subsequent to that, the zoning was changed, so now it is business too. So the existing use would not require a special permit, and many other uses wouldn't, but fast food does. So we do need to go to Board of Appeals. Our hearing is scheduled for September 15th. We've submitted architectural plans for the, at design review and landscaping, and as I mentioned, there really are not significant changes. I didn't mention the water service, and there's a reference to a DPW referral, and I apologize, but I don't have that in front of me, and I don't know what it says. So traffic. A Dunkin' Donuts generates more traffic than a bank, and we submitted, we obtained a traffic report that Jason Adams and his team at McMahon Associates prepared, we've submitted it to the, to the board. The conclusion is that there will not be adverse impacts. There's specific languages with the proposed project in place. Safe and efficient access will be provided to the site, and the traffic increases associated with both background traffic road and project-related traffic are expected to be accommodated on the area Traffic reports, to me, as a proponent for developers so often, are very, very conservative. And I'm always having a discussion with traffic consultants about why, you know, it's so concerned, why don't you say what you think is likely to happen? But they, the industry standards require them to go by ITE rates, and so in this case, they've used a 50% pass-by traffic assumption. That is, they're suggesting that the development of this site as a Dunkin' Donuts will cause, that 50% of the traffic trips will be new trips on the roadway. And yet, there are reports that have been submitted previously that suggest that a much higher percentage of trips at a Dunkin' Donuts are bypass. And I think that's true, particularly in this case, where we have those other Dunkin' Donuts facilities I've, I've mentioned, and where we're going to be closing a facility close by. Now, some other Dunkin' Donuts-type place could move into the, the one we're closing, but as a practical matter, this is a very conservative report, and the impacts, as I've mentioned, in correspondence to the town plan are very minimal. There are only two times when there's a change in level of service, and it's from B to C. Change in delay of a mere 1.6 seconds for the left turn from Sandwich Road onto Route 28A in this very conservative report. And then, that's during a morning peak hour, during an afternoon peak hour, and only then, then the left turn, the same movement is projected to increase by 7.2 seconds, again, assuming that there's as much new traffic as would be indicated by, with a bypass rate of only 50%. We are, we will be providing a bike path, ride-share information, and doing what else the franchise can do to help reduce, reduce trips. That is a presentation. Jason Adams, the traffic consultant, is, is here to speak, and Tom Bunker. Questions about operations can be addressed to Eric Escander through me, and we hope that he'll soon be able to approve this, this project, and we'll be on to the Board of Appeals in a couple of weeks.
John, move the lights back on. Paul, you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question. I was concerned about the traffic and drove through that area, and it is considerably north of the area, but I was a little concerned about the McMahon report, which I have a lot of respect for, but I'd like you to just explain something. At the three peak periods that you show, peak weekday morning, peak weekday afternoon, and Saturday, it shows an increase of 119 new vehicle trips in an hour. That's two per minute.
Two per minute, right.
And then you go on to say that's an acceptable manner. How do you come to that conclusion that it's acceptable with that number of additional, new trips?
Right. So first of all, just to clarify a little bit about new trips and pass-by trips. I know that Attorney at law went into that a little bit, but a development like this will draw traffic from the existing roadway, so that the pass-by trips are trips that are already traveling past the site. So someone that's traveling on 28 or on Sandwich Road that would, you know, in the course of going from point A to point B, would now come into the site here, similar to how they would be going to other Dunkin' Donuts, specifically the Dunkin' Donuts just down the road. So that number of new trips, as you're referring to it, isn't specifically total new vehicles that will be on the roadways. So they will be new to this site because they're either at an existing Dunkin' Donuts facility, or ideally, we're drawing a little bit more patronage into the site and providing a more of a convenient location for, for other patrons of the site. But those vehicle trips that are new to the site, but not necessarily new to the roadway, will then be distributed in a couple of different manners. Some of them will turn left to head on Sandwich Road away from 28. We would estimate that that number would be about 20% of the We would estimate that that number would be about twenty percent of the trips to and from the site would turn left, turn right in from Sandwich Road, turn left to head back, you know, into, towards East Falmouth, that direction. And then about fifty percent, we would expect, to come from and be returning to Falmouth Center, so taking a right turn from Sandwich Road onto 28. So those are vehicle trips that are much easier to process by the roadway volumes. So between those two sections, you have seventy percent of your trips to the site, which does leave thirty percent that could be taking a left to head towards East Falmouth via the left turn from Sandwich Road. We do feel that number is conservative. We would expect that the majority of vehicles to the site are gonna make right turns in and out of the site, they're just easier turns to make. But we did want to present that conservative analysis, so that we can see how the intersection could operate with what we're kind of considering to be a worst-case scenario of up to thirty percent of the vehicle trips turning left onto 28 from Sandwich Road. And our analysis, which we went out and we did a delay study at the Sandwich Road/Route 28 intersection back in the middle of July, during a weekday afternoon peak hour, just to understand exactly how things operate today, so that we calibrated our model to match the existing conditions, then we added on the vehicle trips associated with the site, and reran the analysis, and those were the results that Attorney-elect was referring to, that we do see a slight increase in the average vehicle delay, but we don't feel that that's a true, like, noticeable impact to either the site patrons, or more specifically, the vehicles traveling along Sandwich Road and Route 28. And those vehicle trips that are coming from the site, they're really not gonna have much of a significant impact on the Route 28 mainline traffic. Those through movements that are traveling between the town center and East Falmouth are really gonna have much of an impact from this project. So that's how we kind of look at the trips and forecast, where we expect them to travel to and from, and then run our analysis accordingly.
The state's considering a rotary or some other improvements in that intersection.
Right.
I have two other minor points on the site. One is, it looks like it's a double window for the bank. Are you taking out one of those drive-in windows to provide only a single?
Yeah, so there will be just one drive-through window. So there are, I mean, you can see the infrastructure of the bank today, where they do have the double drive-through, but there will be one single drive-through window for the.
You showed truck delivery, you said large truck delivery to the west of the building. How does that truck get back out on the roadway? Does it have to back into the traffic?
So this, is it all right if I just come up here? So here we have a loading zone right in this area. The truck can back out, either circulate through the parklot here, or circulate around.
So it would have to back into the traffic flow?
It would, with using this loading zone, it would have to back up to come out of the loading zone.
Thank you.
Could you explain that again, please? Show me how the truck comes in and gets into that dock.
This is the, is the. So we're showing the truck here, which has completed its turn from Sandwich Road into the site. Yeah. And it can circulate around. We show it coming into the loading zone right here, backing up, and in this case, traveling around the site.
So it drives forward into the loading zone?
It drives forward into the loading zone. Backs out. So this is the truck in the loading zone, will back out, and can travel around the building outside of the bypass lane of the drive-through. We see it circulate around past the new parking area, and this is the movement, turning back to head right on Sandwich Road and get back to Route 28.
And where's the delivery door?
The delivery door would be in this area right here. So that would be a new feature to the site, we would be adding in a delivery door to keep that area separated from the drive-through.
I don't know. Most truck is back into where they're gonna deliver it to the door. I mean, you're unloading in the back, walking around the vehicle to put it inside.
We have started to discuss an alternative, and maybe the Board would think it's a good idea. I mentioned that this is forty feet from here to here. Loads of room for the single pickup, bypass for a car that just wants to get right. And you could put, here in fact, is a truck shown, you could make your required fourteen-foot by forty-five-foot delivery area back here, and actually, the distance to the proposed delivery door here is probably not longer than the distance from the back of the truck there. And given the visibility of cars coming around and the relative infrequency of the truck being on the site, it's probably a reasonable plan to have deliveries come out of the truck here and just go over to a door here. Maybe that's a good alternative. It also means we wouldn't have to do this construction, and we'd have more green space it would be adding to lot coverage. Lot coverage is well under what's allowed, but delete it the way it is more.
Pat?
I kind of like that comment, because in East Falmouth, a huge success has been those picnic tables outside. I see them used all the time. Usually, the umbrellas aren't up, and a couple of trees have died, but be that as it may, there are always cyclists who are using that, or people, I think, in the neighborhood, too. And so I would think I'd love to see something like that here. I think it would be used quite a bit.
We do have a bike path, a bike rack, I didn't mention, but also, yeah, if we eliminated this, I think there's really a significant area that is screened from the street.
I had a question. I thought, did I hear you say that the performance of the turn is gonna go from a B to a C on the traffic?
In the weekday morning, yes.
In the weekday mornings.
Yeah, right now, the, you know, the level of service is based on the number of seconds of delay, and right now, we're right on the threshold of B to C. So that reduction from B to C actually only represents, again, in this worst-case scenario, in this conservative analysis, a change of, I think it was 1.2 seconds in the average delay, but that happens to flip us from the B to C.
What is the, I guess it's too premature to talk about the rotary, but go ahead.
Yeah, what fine comment. Changing from a bank to a fast-food restaurant obviously has an increase in flow, and I see the DPW has addressed that issue, or has requested you address it. I think that's an important issue as well. I should not be asking you that, as a traffic engineer, I should be asking the applicant. Well, we changed from a bank to a fast-food restaurant.
You're talking about the flow?
The discharge for wastewater flow is gonna be significantly increased, and they've addressed it, so I assume you're going to take up that issue with DPW, and I think that's fine.
And I see the DPW referral for a water service.
Are you talking about septic flow, Mr. Dreyer?
Sorry?
Are you talking about septic flow?
Yes.
Well, the bank is, a bank is seventy-five gallons per day, per thousand square feet, I believe, so it's two-hundred-and-some gallons. And as I said before, the flow for a fast-food restaurant is twenty gallons per seat, and that would be five-hundred-and-forty gallons. So I failed to mention, so I'm glad you brought it up, that we are installing a brand-new septic system, which will update the septic system and accommodate that flow. And that's going in the same location as the existing, Montan can show you that, because it's on the grading and drainage plan, right in that area.
Fast-food restaurant by Title V does have a minimum flow of a thousand gallons a day, but we're slightly more than half of that on this, and this is a thousand-gallon-a-day system by requirements, but it's only five-hundred-and-twenty gallons a day actual flow. So it is a new system going in, which hasn't been reviewed fully by the Health Department yet. I see the water service, I haven't read the referral from the water service, what they have to say, if they are suggesting updating, enlarging the service or not.
Thank you.
Yes, Mark?
I guess I need to direct my questions to Jason with regard to the traffic. Just to piggyback on what Paul said, is there a percentage that you can illustrate or give us an indication of present traffic count? Because I was looking at Table 1 in the report, and, for example, that thirty-nine count for the AM weekday peak hour was an actual count.
Correct.
So, and I would assume the one-hundred-and-nineteen projection made in Table 3 is based on ITE?
Correct, it's a theoretical calculation.
Okay.
Right.
So, just to gauge the difference, the intensity of trips, can you give us a ballpark as to, you know, whether, I mean, I'd like it with AM and PM weekdays, and, because I'm kind of confused, because in Table 3 didn't have an increase. They said seventy-seven, in Table 3, seventy-seven was gonna stay static, as being what presently is there now with the bank use, and is gonna remain the same at seventy-seven with the fast-food restaurant use. And I was a little confused about that.
Table 3 being the capacity analysis result, or?
Yes.
So is your question primarily about the increase in trips to the site?
Yeah, I'm trying to get a feel for gauging the present use observed
Right.
in real time. For example, the AM weekday peak hour, thirty-nine.
Right.
The projected, Table 3, capacity analysis says one-hundred-and-nineteen. So, for intensity gauging, what kind of increase is that?
So in terms of trips?
No, I mean percentage-wise.
Percentage in, trips or delay?
Trips.
Trips. So we would be going, and again, this is theoretical, and it also is important to understand that the trips to this site that we would expect are trips that are pretty much just going to the Dunkin' Donuts down the road, so.
So the one-nineteen in Table 3 are non-pass-by trips?
They are, to get a little probably too into the weeds, they are technically pass-by trips, because those are vehicle trips that are mostly made up of people going from their home to their office, to their work, stopping at Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay.
In that sense, they're a pass-by trip.
Okay.
As it relates to the existing Dunkin' Donuts site, we would expect that the majority of the patrons at the existing Dunkin' Donuts site, when it is closed, would now travel to this site. So they're new to this site, but they're still the same people that are going to the Dunkin' Donuts down the road. So this site, in the weekday morning, as a bank, has about forty total trips, that's entering and exiting, and we would expect that when you move the Dunkin' Donuts trips from the existing site, and maybe you capture a couple extra, that that would go up in the weekday morning to about a hundred-and-forty to a hundred, you know, a hundred-and-thirty to a hundred-and-forty entering and exiting trips total, with the increase being the one-nineteen, the hundred-and-twenty or so additional trips beyond what's there from the bank today. But it's, to characterize it as a pure percentage increase is difficult, just because those are vehicle trips that are already traveling around Falmouth, already using Route 28. Most of them are probably already coming by this site on their way to the existing site in one direction or the other.
So, I mean, in Table 1, it gives the thirty-nine for existing trips for the bank.
Right.
And then it gives the IET trip count
Correct.
for a coffee-donut-shop driving.
With a drive-through, correct.
That number is two-sixty-three.
It's two-seventy-six total, so that's a hundred-and-forty-one entering and a hundred-and-thirty-five exits. So that's, it's basically a hundred-and-thirty vehicles, a hundred-and-forty vehicles come to the site. When you sum up the entering and exiting, you get the two-seventy-five or two-eighty, but that's not two-hundred-and-eighty new trips to the site, it's half of that as a new trip. So it's, as was said earlier, it's about a car, it's about two cars, two cars a minute in that sense, over the course of an hour, that would both enter and exit the site.
So, let's move on from that. So, I'm understanding that McMahon Associates did the Route 28 transportation master plan?
We did, yes.
I'm having a little confusion, I guess, with data discrepancy, because in that master plan, in Appendix D, it says that the level of service for the Sandwich Road-T ticket intersection was graded at EF. So, and then, so you're looking at Table 3 now, and it says levels of service will vary between A and D, so help me figure out why the discrepancy.
Right. And the original study that we did as part of the work with the town just used all of the baseline industry standard default values. It presents a much more conservative analysis, and it reduces the cost of doing the study, because you don't have to do all the additional data collection. So it still allows you to compare apples to apples as you look at different alternatives, because it's all relative. When we looked into this study and we used the existing baseline default values, we could quickly see that the specific movements at the Sandwich Road intersection were being greatly overvalued in terms of the delay being reported. So we went out and we conducted an additional delay study, so we actually sent technicians back out into the field to measure the vehicle delays that were experienced over the course of an hour.
So you're saying that the company's done an addendum to the actual transportation master plan that's being, I mean, that was submitted, I think, April of 2016, so they're submitting something else to take away the information that would illustrate in general? I mean, because right now, I'm seeing a discrepancy
Right.
between, I mean, from the same company, you're having two, one's in EF and the other report says AD, and so it's like, which one's right? So my question is, subsequent to the April 2015 master study, is there an addendum that's being sent? So this report on file for this project mirrors what the master is?
Do you want to?
Well, I think we're gonna be hearing you again, I think you could come back and address some of these concerns.
Just very quickly, you know, there's a planning analysis, and there's an operational analysis. McMahon was hired by the town to do more of a planning analysis, which is much more conservative in nature, uses certain ITE rates and assumptions. He would not do the actual operational analysis of some delays and turning movement counts, so they have a little bit more finer data. But don't try to get lost in the weeds a little bit. We're concerned about turning movements at the site driveway. What's the level of service at the site driveway? And we'll go from there. That's the reason for the discrepancy.
I mean, my understanding, I mean, I'm a new member, but in the code 312 says we're supposed to evaluate impact to streets off-site.
Well, yes, that's fine, and that's, and the information they're providing you, plus, you know, the background of information is all worth. background of the information is all worthwhile. We always try to work for the site driveway. I'm not telling you to ignore adjacent street traffic, but start at the site driveway. That's usually where the biggest impact is. And that's where your site planning begins.
I have two questions.
Yeah?
On the landscape plan, is the stone wall going to be removed or stay there? The existing stone wall?
It's going to stay just the way it is.
All right, thank you. And also, do you have an idea how close the site is to the new sewer line?
Yes, I do have an idea. In fact, I have with me the sewer district map so I could be precise. Unfortunately, we aren't on it. We looked to see if we were. It, we're about, I think, two properties on Route 28 away from the, the sewer. But this is by no means of, of very intense development in terms of that, so I don't think that the town's going to extend the sewer to, to serve it. Nor it probably doesn't have the public need that would want to go along with a, an extension. I'll check, I'll give you that map that I printed out today and we just miss it.
Okay, thank you.
I, I heard it's the Great Pond area, not the Green Pond, right? I heard a couple.
Great Pond.
It's Great Pond. Okay, I'm outside.
You want to ask for any elevations in my building?
Yeah. Part of our site plan review is design review. So the next time if you come back, you know, this board is the one who'll take a look at any elevations of the building, showing what it's going to look like.
Right.
Oh, there we go.
I mean, we've, we've submitted it all, but there really, there are no changes, so. Somewhere here I've got a couple of photographs I can give you. I think we submitted these photographs. If the board feels that maybe we didn't. So we have some photographs, please.
Well, that's what we're looking for right there.
I think we only put on this drive for you to see two elevations, but we've submitted plans that show all four elevations. But in C D, you won't find any significant changes.
Okay.
For your record here, just a couple of the photos.
Paul? This is just a sign change, it's not a material change in elevation, is that correct?
That's correct. The only changes I think that are proposed are some of the existing windows are going to be, have a film on them so that you don't see through them. I don't think from the street you'll see any change. And then as I mentioned, there is one new door and I think one door being eliminated.
And probably a new paint scheme.
We don't, we don't have to propose it. The colors that are there now currently would be fine. We may change some trim now if it's okay with, you know, because the roof may change and we may propose some trim changes and that's it. But the, the majority of the building is almost not colors exactly.
Anybody else?
Yeah, just one final comment. I think the developer did a very nice job in East Falmouth Dunkin' Donuts just west of Davisville, particularly with the stone wall. In fact, it was so well received that CBS put the same wall on Davisville Road. So that was a nice impact as a result of, of the developer doing a nice project there.
You ready for any questions from Bob? Yes. Please step up to the mic, yeah?
Good evening, Board. Mr. Arman, I am in a butter. Could we put, please, you know, the plan back please? Thank you. Nope, please keep going to the plan. That should be fine. Perfect, yeah, that one's good.
You need to identify yourself.
My name is Lori Lopes, thank you. I am in a butter and I, may I? Right near the indigenous species little corner. As Mr. Arman said, we have a Dunkin' Donuts and T ticket, North Falmouth, Main Street, East Falmouth and Route 151. That's a lot of Dunkin' Donuts. There's a drive-through 1.1 miles from this proposed site in East Falmouth and I believe it's, no, I'm sorry, 1.1 miles to the Main Street one, 2.2 to the East Falmouth one from the site. They both have drive-throughs. My main concern is, you show where the speaker is that people are going to drive up to and order there. Please.
It's right there.
Right there, okay. And that is facing all the residents that are along this side here. And there, you said there would be 119?
All the questions should be through.
I'm sorry, I believe I heard 119 trips per hour. So that speaker will probably be going off three times per customer for 119 customers in an hour, each hour, each hour. Okay, and that's where the speaker is going to go and that's where we, we all live. Now, there's a little buffer there. There's a little line of trees, a small buffer. It's like, in the wintertime, I can see right down to the bank and they can see right up into our properties. That, all that foliage goes away. So my, that's one of my main concerns is the speaker, where it was located. And it looks like it's not in a great spot. Second is traffic. I do live on Trotting Park Road. I most of the time go out onto the 28 end. So I didn't hear any traffic study about that, that, trying to come out of Trotting Park Road. I've lived there my whole entire life. And coming out of Trotting Park Road on days is sometimes nearly impossible. They don't stop at that stop sign on Sandwich Road. It used to be a yield years ago and now it's a stop and nobody stops there. Maybe occasionally, but most of the time they go through there. So it's, it's really, really hard to get out of Trotting Park Road. Also, the, the pre-proposed parking spots out front, was it five or seven that was originally for the bank? Was it five or seven spots that was? Oh, it was seven, okay. Because I, and they say they're going to remove all the foliage from the Sandwich roadside and the, and the wall?
No, the wall's staying.
All the foliage, all the plantings are staying there now? Excellent, excellent, yes. It makes that area, I'm sorry, it makes that area look very nice. Let's see. Now, I just, let's see.
Oh, was it five or seven?
Was, oh, it's, was it five or seven? It was seven? Okay. All right. Oh, deliveries. If that proposed, and I know they said they're going to maybe work on that, that proposed delivery truck, how often are the deliveries to Dunkin' Donuts on a site like this?
It's a good question. We'll get an answer for you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Keep with your questions, we'll get them all answered.
Okay, all right, so that was one. How many deliveries per day will that? And also, where will the, where are the dumpsters with the dumpster, where are the dumpsters located?
Right there? Go ahead, yes, yes.
So this is the dumpster.
Thank you. Again, on the residential side of the building. And how often does that, will that be emptied and at what time of day? That would be a concern. You know, that sometimes we hear them very early in the morning at Administration Building or, you know, White Hen, we can hear the bang, bang, bang of the dumpsters. So that, that is a concern. And also, will they be making donuts on this site? Or is it just a, will they be actually making the donuts or is it just an outlet? Is there, okay, that's a concern, I smell grease. Okay, let's see. Yes, is there a fence proposed for along the residential? There's a hill there now. Would there be a fence proposed for that?
Both dumpsters had a fence.
Yeah? Where's that? That's just around the dumpster. There's a, there's a fence around the loading zone.
Yeah, I just saw one around the dumpster.
There's one around the, but there doesn't seem to be one alongside the property. Any more questions?
Let's see. I think that was mostly my concern was the traffic and the, the dumpsters, the trap, the delivery truck backing out beeping all the time, how many deliveries? And you say you're going to expand on this, this side? Now, this is a grassy hillside that slopes up to our properties. Is any of that hillside going to be, you know?
Cut down.
Cut into or whatnot?
They're not, doesn't seem proposing under plans we see. We don't see any changes.
Because you said that if they, if they have to move the delivery truck over to here, they would probably have to make that wider?
I think they testified that it was wide enough, is what I thought I heard.
It was, okay. All right, so I guess that's, I guess that's.
Okay, who wants to address some of these questions? Mr. Arman? Thank you.
I hope you've got them listed because I don't.
Well, we know what the big ones are.
Yes, just the most of it.
Okay. I probably will need your help in remembering.
Why don't we start with an easy one?
Sorry?
Want to start with an easy one?
Yeah, I'd rather start with the hardest one. Let's just do them in order they were asked.
Remember in timing of deliveries.
Yeah.
Deliveries, that was a big one.
Okay, deliveries, twice a week, not twice a day, twice a week, two, two, two times a week. And we did discuss, we could put that delivery area over here.
And what time of use?
If you don't make donuts.
That's another question.
I'll just, I'll just clarify, it's two times a week for the big, for the 18-wheeler truck that we're proposing to deliver there. The, the production, my production trucks come once a day and they go to the very, they go to the, they'll go, they'll be plucking here to go to this entrance once a day. The, the twice-a-week 18-wheeler will come to, well, you know, our first proposal was here, but after hearing what the board, the board's feedback, I'm guessing that this will be a better situation for it.
And what time will that be, the trucks come?
The, the big trucks come, it varies. We have some control over it with seasonality and they don't come. They try not to come for us during peak times at all, so it, you know, right now I've found it's all over the map, but some of them are coming at, you know, four in the afternoon, some of them coming at nine at night, so.
What's that earlier, is that they come?
I don't have that answer right now, but I do tell you, I have a little bit of control over it.
Hold on for a second, okay? All the questions are through me, okay? So no, this is not a private conversation. Hold on, you're not talking, you've got to stop. Bob, what about, one of the questions was, are they making donuts here? That's the answer is no?
The answer is no. Another question was, how many times is a dumpster emptied? That is once or twice a week?
Lori, hold on for a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You, you're not recognized, please don't talk anymore, okay? We're trying to work with you. What are the other questions?
Sound mitigation?
Well, we can, first of all, between the grade of the driveway here and the grade here, the topography plan shows there's a, a change of eight feet. So this is actually significantly depressed from the area over here and I presume perhaps even more so from the houses. The topo plan ends in here and it may continue to rise as we go that way. This portion is grass as was stated. So widening this bit of driveway is not going to involve removal of any trees at all. To the extent we can, we can put more sound-absorbing shrubbery in this area. I'm not aware whether there's an existing fence, I guess not. Could put in a fence if that would help, but the shrubbery might be more attractive. So the distance here at least from this house is more than a couple hundred feet closer to a house on this lot. I'm, we're not aware that the speaker's been a problem, for instance, at the East Falmouth site, which is right next to, next to a residence. And we don't want it to be a problem, so Paul, can, we can try to moderate that. Any other questions?
There was concern about the effect of traffic on the Trotting Park Road, 28 intersection.
Well, I don't have an opinion about that. I don't think that was specifically studied, so that'd be the intersection coming down, down there.
Just, just to add in real quick, there, there's not going to be a significant change in the number of vehicles traveling past Trotting Park Road because those, the vehicles coming to this site are, for the most part, already traveling to the other Dunkin' Donuts. And the additional vehicles that we might draw would most likely be on Sandwich Road, which is going to keep them away from the Trotting Park intersection with Route 28. So, you know, there certainly could be a couple additional vehicles now and then and that's kind of our hope as a business. But we wouldn't think that that's going to change the, the traffic flow in any significant way because those vehicles are already traveling past that intersection today to, to travel to the, the Dunkin' Donuts that will then be closed and the patrons will just shift to this site. So might be slight variations in the, the pattern of the vehicles, but there's not going to be a significant increase in the number of vehicles. We wouldn't think that that is going to be an issue that gets any worse than it is today because of this project.
So we're going to see some changes to this site coming back again. You were talking about, maybe you could consider some additional screening as well.
Jim, I have one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
Hours of operation intended?
Five to 11 at what we tend to, we ask for, depending if you wait.
I have one more question.
Yes, Doug?
So, given Mr. Cool's statement about the intersection of Sandwich Road and 28 being generally graded as the E or an F, is there ever a point where you reach a plateau where you don't want to increase any more traffic?
Right, and, and, I mean, there certainly is, that, that certainly does exist, that you could reach a point where additional vehicles would become an issue. Based on the additional fieldwork that we did out here, we feel there is significant available capacity to still process vehicles. So that, the changes in travel patterns as a result of this project wouldn't bring us to that plateau. And again, just to, not to get too into detail, but as the planner did say, that, that master plan was done at a planning level and, and it was, you know, trying to identify big picture issues and big picture solutions and, and not get down into terrible amounts of detail where, you know, our, our client was willing to, to spend that extra time and money to get into the details specific to the site to ensure that his customers are able to get in and out of the site in an appropriate manner because if the site doesn't work for his customers, it's a, it's a poor choice. So we wanted to understand in much greater detail that there is available capacity, that we're not going to approach that plateau, that the vehicles can get in and out of the site in an appropriate manner. We feel that there is, based on all the data that we have, enough capacity to process the vehicles.
And that's just my question, just that you had given some thought beyond just the initial.
Right, and it's, I mean, that's a very important part of this project.
I don't want to get into the conflicts between prior studies and this study. We've got hard numbers that they're producing for us right here and that's what we're going to talk about.
Just wanted to know that you'd given some thought.
If you want to go into the other study another time, we can do that another time. But I think that we, they're saying it is an F. They're saying that they measured it now and they, they didn't, you know, they went out and took field measurements, so.
I just wanted to be clear that they included beyond just the intersection of the driveway.
John?
Just one other question, excuse me, concerning the sound mitigation, are there different types of speakers that can be used or volume? I remember years ago when I was on the appeals board that the one on Main Street came in front of us and they, they did quite a nice job on sound. front of us and they did quite a nice job on sound mitigation because the neighbors were right next door. They were like within 40 or 50 feet, so...
Yeah, there is technology available to us now that can be programmed or turned up and down for certain times of the day, and I have, you know, we've used that in other sites off key. I think more effectively, to be honest with you, is sound screening with, you know, different types of plantings that we can use. I think that's more effective. And aesthetically, I'm sure our neighbors would appreciate more to see nicer planting green that's going to be there all year round, and we have no problems on presenting that next time we come.
Okay, but there is some technology that...
Absolutely, yeah.
Because sound does travel a long way and the neighbors have, you know, valid concerns, especially starting at 5:00 in the morning.
Yep, yep, there's a technology that allows us to turn that up and down throughout the day, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, you had another question?
Um, well, I mean, you had kind of snipped it in the bud, I was going to relate my next question about the comparison of studies. But my curiosity for the record was, in this study in the file, there was actual traffic counting done, and I was wondering, since they're the same company or consultant that did it, if there was the same methodology used in the previous study. But that's a moot point at this point, apparently.
I think they've answered that, yeah, it's difference between planning and actual measurements, so I think we got an answer there.
But let me make a point. Reading the master plan, they did actually do personal traffic counts. So, I'll just throw it out there. Rather detailed.
Okay. Any more questions from the public? Please step up and identify yourself.
My name's Daniel Figurito and I live directly next door to 20 Sandwich Road. And right now, there's a lot of trees behind that U-shaped driveway there right now, and that U-shaped driveway is pretty much wide open and it looks directly into my lot. My concern is noise going through there. Is there something that's going to be trees, bushes, fence, something along that? And lighting. Because right now, there is a light somewhere by that U-shape on the right-hand side or the bottom side, if you're looking at the screen right now, that you can, it lights up my driveway. Especially being open until 11:00. Right now, I don't have kids. One day, I don't plan to move in from there, that's a family house. I want to keep that house. So one day when I do have kids, having that noise start at 5:00 a.m., going to 11:00 p.m., it's going to be annoying. So that, the lighting, the traffic, again, is going to be a major concern because taking a left onto 28 to work, it's a pain in the butt, 7:00 a.m., still a pain in the butt. Doesn't matter, taking a, going straight onto 28, like Ms. Loeb said, going to Trotting Park, you're going to have that traffic there all the time. So, and my other question is, is there anything planning to be done with that lot? Is that lot going to stay the way it is or are they going to open it up to park and they're going to try to get another building in there or...
We're looking at a proposed site plan and that's all they're proposing right now is what we see. Anything else would be a change, they'd have to come back and do it all over again.
Okay. So my major concern right now then is lighting and noise going through there.
Could you point out where your light is?
My lot's directly next door to 20 Sandwich Road, just 200 feet away though. Right now, there is a light somewhere around here and one back here, which lights up the driveway, and I can hear it. Obviously, there's no, a lot of trees stops right here, that's pretty much open, so my driveway is right there, my house is right there on this side of the land trees. So I can, I'm going to be obviously hearing what's going to be there. Okay, so, thanks. That's pretty much my questions right now.
Anybody else? Bob, you were, all set?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Well, they're coming back.
Making a motion to continue?
Yeah, well, we'll just wait till they'll come back again. We thank you very much for your presentation and we'll be, yes?
Well, there are some improvements it looks like we could make. We might change the loading area. That gives us an opportunity for more landscaping elsewhere. We can add landscaping as a buffer to noise. We should look at the issue of the lighting that's affecting the neighbor and we should deal with that. Sounds like an existing problem that can be improved. I'm hoping that we might be able to submit a revised plan to the town planner for review by staff and that I think we know what the issues are. There are some fairly minor improvements we can make to the plan, but I'm hoping, I don't know if we need another further discussion as opposed to just review of a plan. What I'm saying is I'm hoping we're close to being able to have the town planner put a favorable motion in front of the board, perhaps reflecting a new plan.
I think it's a good idea to try to keep all the lighting on the site.
I think that should be a requirement.
Yeah, it is, it should be a requirement, yeah, we really do, if it was a new building, we'd be looking for that. So if we have to fix something that's there, it should be changed. It really shouldn't be flooding over into any of your, you have plenty of land there, you don't need to do it. All set?
So, your next meeting is the 30th and I'll meet with the design team and we'll see what we can come up with for then. Hopefully, we have something for you. If not, for sure by the time the board appeals.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
That's right.
Okay, I don't know if that's it. Okay. So Brian, do you have something for us to talk about the, any changes for the policies for site plan review and permits?
I do.
Thought you might.
I do, because...
Do you have a PowerPoint presentation for it?
I don't because we just sort of put this together today. I'll find it for you here in the moment, you should have it in your package. And let's see here. Boom, 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 boom. Current fees, fees are important. Proposed fees are really important. But Melinda insists. Okay, so you should have in your package a document with something like this.
Yep.
And we can just go through it together. I'm sorry for the font, it's small, but hopefully it'll be long here. These are your regulations governing special permits and site plan reviews. They are not your subdivision rules or regulations. These are sort of your administrative rules. If you look at, you know, Section 9 of 48, it says you should adopt, you know, rules in a number of forms and fees, and not really substantive rules like your subdivision rules or regulations. So you actually don't have to have a hearing to make changes, but we like to be able to do this full transparency too. So these regulations, if you look at, on the page one, paragraph B, you see we're recommending that you change the number of copies from five to three. Three typically does a trick here up at the table. And then we would have it in your regulations governing site plans, we've used the PDF.
Right.
Which we had discussed, you know, some time ago. And I mentioned to the board, you can ask and they can say, okay, now...
Now we can make it a regulation.
Now you make it, you know, so...
So we've been where we've, the last few months, it's been we've asked to have it.
You could insist.
Now we can, now we can have it. I think we should, I think it makes, for the people at home, I think it changes everything. They can't see the plans on our desk.
Sure, and I think in the applicants, you find it actually much easier to have it up, the pointer, you have it on your table.
Then sticking papers up on the wall and running back and forth and falling down, it works much better.
Absolutely. So electronic versions, and I don't need to vote tonight, but I just want to introduce them in here.
Okay.
And then we'll sort of formalize it for you in a form of motion. These do get recorded with the town clerk. Subdivision rules and regulations get recorded with our land court recorder and registered deeds. I'm making those distinctions now because we're going to come back with the subdivision rules and regulations later, that'll be an actual hearing, it's much more... So we would offer that as a change to your special permit regulations and then under your site plan review regulations, we would ask on page three, oops, I'm sorry, on page two. I've got to edit myself here. On your public hearing notices. Right now, the way things, right, the way things are working with the enterprise, all the advertising, like publishing on Fridays, we actually publish three to make, because you can't include the day of the hearing. So we actually have three publications, so we need to change that because our old rules, you know, two, people will pay for two. Well, now we need three. So we wanted to, because it used to be, you know, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, then it was Tuesday, Thursday, every day. Now we're stuck with Fridays. So we would ask the board to consider changing that to successive weeks to three successive weeks, as early as 14 days, for that reason. And, oops, just above that, we ask you, we'll be thinking about deleting paragraph G because you are now the designing view committee, so you're not referring it to yourself anymore.
Just eliminate.
We'll just be eliminating that. But you are now the designing view committee. Well, let's see, then on...
Did you say G?
Let's see, on page two...
Delination of the 100-year...
Page two, G.
On page two, paragraph G.
Designer view committee, scratch.
We would have to simply...
Backside.
We would get rid of that because you no longer send it to them, you are the designer view committee. On page three, under now we're into your site plan review regulations, again, we would ask for three copies, paper copies, together with a PDF in that area. Again, that's just a, just a, right now, like tonight, it's just a site plan review, you know, we have that stipulation both special permits and site plan. And on page four, a very astute young attorney, who used to work for Bob, pointed this out to me, that under the zoning bylaw, we're required to send notices, you read tonight, Paul, out to the butters for a plan review. Not really a notice, it's just a, letting them know that we'll offer some public comments, they get all their public comments. In your regulations, it said notice to a butters is not required. Oops. Fortunately, the bylaw overrules your regulation here, so we're going to clean that up and just, yes, notice to a butters within 100 feet of any part of the land. This paragraph cites the zoning bylaw and it's...
So it's just going to be put right in?
So we're just going to take that out and put that right in. So that, now you're consistent again. And again, it's, the bylaw always trumps, but we don't want to be confusing people out there, and she was rightfully confused. And I didn't have any good explanation. Other than, you know, nobody asked a thousand. Now, for the World Series, this is your current fee schedule. And we would ask you to consider this alternative fee schedule. And right now, we're not really looking at increasing anything, but we want to be able to also include standard fees that we don't have in here today, but people pay, yeah. And that's the notice to a butters. You have the 49 cents per mail, and if it's certified mail, it's a little more expensive, mailing labels. And in your regulations, we want you to at least put down that for your legal ads or your public notice ads, it's the current rate per inch with the enterprise. We have, only in a dire emergency have we ever took a Kipcot Times. On Monday, if something happens. So we use, we use the enterprise per-inch rate for your notices. And that just covers costs of mailings and labels and whatnot. We're not asking for any changes in the...
So we're just substituting these tables, right?
We are, except I just saw $6,000, 30 units. So disregard that $6,000, that came out of nowhere, and I'll go back and check on that. That looks like a word processing issue.
One extra zero?
Well, you know, those decimal points and commas, you get it every time. So disregard that for a minute, and I'll go back and check on that. I think that might be a Kipcot Commission issue. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I believe we've set a cap for site plan reviews at $2,000, if it's a Kipcot Commission. So let me just go back and check that for you while we do that. Not waiting to have doubling up people's fees. So I just wanted to run through those for you tonight, just introduce it for you, let me take a look at them, and then we'll put this more in a clean format for you, clean it up and put it in a form of motion. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Yes, Mark?
I do have a question. The, you said cover costs of mailing labels and things like that.
Yeah.
As it exists today, who pays for that right now?
Uh, the customer.
The customer pays, so we're just identifying it in a procedure.
More detail.
Okay.
And we put it up on the webpage. We get a lot of phone calls, which is a cost, and we need to be able to put it up there. Okay? Consider it a question.
Okay, next item on the agenda is...
Can I ask you a question about that? I'm just curious, the proposed one, number two, for site plan for commercial, is $200 per 1,000 square feet under 10,000. And if it's 2,000 over 10,000, well, that's just multiplying by two. Why don't you just put one rate, $200 per 1,000 square feet, whatever the size is?
As I recall, when you're over 10,000 square feet, you go to the Kipcot Commission and you pay a very substantial fee and you go through a very extensive review. We didn't want to double that because that review has already been accomplished. We want to be able to charge a fee because, well, engineers have to look at it, I have to look at it, you know, zoning board has to, whatever. So I'm almost positive somewhere out there in planning board world is a vote to cap the fee for developments of regional impact, so you're not doubling up the fee. I was positive that's what that's about.
And that's an additional 10,000 feet, right?
Right, in other words, let's say, let's say somebody came in with a 12,000 square-foot building. We would refer that to the Kipcot Commission. They would go through all those fees. Or if you came in with a 11,000 square-foot building, you got to go to the Kipcot Commission. So we just capped it, we just capped it at our 10,000 square-foot, you know, it's essentially $2,000.
Yes, Pat?
Brian, I'm remembering something from a number of years ago, and I cannot cite how many years ago. But when I'm looking at that 6,000 for 30 units and over, there was some discussion, I don't know whether it made it to the planning board or whether this was at one point when I was the chairman, that you were discussing, that it takes so much more time for staff to do reviews of these very large developments and there needs to be some kind of a scale here to... here to look at the time factor involved.
Yeah. We were taught, we talked about that. It's fairly easy to look at a warehouse building on Tomlin's room. It takes a lot more time sometimes to look at 2,000 square foot fast food restaurant. And, but we never really got there, sort of an hourly rate. It's going to take a lot more time to review, so we just never got there. I do recall that conversation, but it's just easier, here's your, it's a commercial use, whether you're a restaurant or a warehouse, and the warehouse is actually overpaying. And perhaps these uses are underpaying. But it's hard, hard to charge by the hour.
John?
Isn't it the same thing as the previous answer? 30 units or more automatically go to the Kitco commission?
I'm pretty sure that is, John, yeah.
I know that's the threshold for the Kitco commission.
Right. So I think we capped, we capped it at $6,000 for 30 lots subdivision. I just want to go back and check the minutes.
Ready to move on? Next item? Next item, committee assignments and reports. So...
You asked for that to be on the agenda?
Yeah, we did. We wanted to revisit the assignments. How was you that asked me to do this?
Yeah, we, at the meeting, we had a discussion on the different assignments, and I agreed to pick up the waste of work committee, as I've been following. And I'm also been assigned by this committee to look at community preservation. John expressed interest in community preservation. And at that time, I suggested come to a meeting, which he did. I enjoy being on that committee, I like participating in it, but, you know, if you look at the overall criteria, it's worthwhile to move people to different activities. And secondly, a lot of the discussion we had last meeting had to do with the housing issues that CPC is addressing more and more. And John has particular expertise in that, so I think we have to think about whether he brings value in that particular area to CPC from the planning board that I perhaps may not have. So I throw it out for discussion purposes. I'll be happy to continue, but, you know, if there's a role for John in there, that might be better representing the planning board, I certainly would support him in that position.
Sounds good to me. John, how do you feel about it?
I'd be pleased and honored.
Good.
And there is a lot of housing issues coming up.
Absolutely. Do we have to formally vote on this, Brian, or you just, okay, we do?
So one has to resign.
Oh, you gotta resign.
And you have to, just to niceties.
I have to resign in writing?
Let me find out. Because right now, you're, you're the person in charge. So I just want to make sure it's procedurally correct. My sense is you'd be just fine for a vote tonight. And I'll just vote tonight, and I'll write it up the right way.
We have a meeting on Thursday. And if we're going to make a change, it would be appropriate to make that change.
Accept a motion, subject to the final paperwork getting done.
I'll talk to you tomorrow about the paperwork. But if, I'll actually ask to John if he wants to do it.
Somebody make a motion.
I move that we accept Paul Trias resignation from the community preservation.
And what else?
And, and accept John's, John Dorsey's acceptance of that position prior, or subsequent to this taking place in writing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All set? Thank you, John.
I might just add, I think that's an incredibly important role. The CPC, it's a very important role. It deals with a lot of money issues, it deals with an awful lot of variety of things.
Okay, Paul, you're up.
And housing becoming bigger than ever.
You resigned.
You resigned, you're done now.
And you did a great job.
Okay. How about committee reports? We're gonna go, we did have, committee reports were already on the agenda, so we'll go back to that. Anyone have anything on some of the committees?
Well, the YLCP hasn't been, I haven't been meeting that often this summer because I've been away a lot. I don't know.
And we aren't going to meet for another couple of meetings, so...
So we have nothing?
And we're at the point where we're still doing some loose ends, just tidying up.
I know this, you had that conversation today about articles for the annual, time of the year, November. You may want to alert the board.
What's going on is that we have the transportation study that's been, the transportation element that's been sitting there for two years, kind of got stymied at town meeting. And we also have the historic element, that we'd like to see both of those go to town meeting in the fall, and at least get their comments, but most hopefully to get them passed. Because those are the remaining two elements that have to be passed by town meeting. And then, once they are passed, that will allow us to pull the whole thing together and actually put it into a completed document. And that's going to take quite a bit of work, too.
But the, the next step you just processed doesn't go back to town meeting?
What next?
Well, they're tying it all together. I mean, the elements are what town meeting approves?
Correct.
They, they...
The goal and the policies.
And that's, that's it. The rest is our planning board work.
Right.
Okay. So the town meeting function, that means that the spring, we should be done with the local comprehensive plan, as far as town meeting is concerned.
Cross fingers, yeah. Well, no, hopefully, we're going to be done with it in the fall, if they pass these.
Oh, in the fall, excuse me.
Putting down the fall warrant.
The fall warrant, yeah, I meant to say fall, not spring.
So that, that would require, at your meeting of the 30th, a vote of the board, because the warrant will close September 2nd. Just heads up.
Okay.
Oh, I should also say, because it's been a while since you all have seen it, this is not a surprise. It's come before, both of these have come before the planning board, so you've had your input on all of these. It's just a matter of getting them on the town warrant.
Well, and, on the EDIC, I've been having, I'm in the minority of opinion there, they, they seem to have been working us, taking or moving into planning. They, they want to redo our housing study and update it. They want, EDIC wants to spend $9,000 of the EDIC's money to update the housing study, and that was voted down. I think they're going to proceed and do it. So I just, I had mentioned, I thought it was a planning function and not an EDIC function, but they feel strongly that they want to have information about what kind of housing we need and where. And not that we just need, I mean, we already know we need housing. We have a program we're working on, they wanted to have it refined. And they're willing to spend significant dollars to refine that and update it based on new census information, and so I guess that's something that's going on.
I think that's a little disconcerting. I think they should be doing a study on how we bring more business to town.
I agree.
So that's interesting, because here we're waiting and hoping that the existing groups will get more together. We've got the housing study that said our housing effort is disjointed, and there's too many groups working on it independently. And to have one more group with another angle, I don't know, maybe it'll be helpful, but it, do they, do you know if they are planning to work in conjunction with one of these other groups that's already existing, or is that separate effort?
They, what's Judy's last name?
Barrett.
They're, they're, they've got a proposal for Judy Barrett, update the report that she did for us. And to, you know, put new statistics and, and also show what areas in particular, what age groups need, need housing, and I guess, and where they need to be done. So it's kind of a refinement of, I voted against it, so just want to let you know that that's been a public discussion, it's happened a few times. And I thought, I've said to them, I don't think we should be doing planning, I think we have other, other areas to fill, and that's just my committee report. Not necessarily good or bad news, just news.
Now, before you hear off the, can you give an update of the Falmouth station? There was a board meeting last week, wasn't there?
Yeah, I can give a quick update of the Falmouth station. I'm not sitting on the committee anymore that's doing it. I had to, they had, I was, decided I wanted to work solely on the solar field, and that's where my intentions are. And they had, Dave Eldridge was doing that, and he's stepped down. But basically, what I remember from our meeting is that they, they're finishing up right now, and first of all, they put it out, back out to cost estimations, and got it back, so now the estimations are lining up with the budget. Before, there was a big discrepancy, and that, and that has been solved, and the specs have been revised down, you know, more towards the original plan. The bid package is supposed to be ready to go out in the next few weeks, and I think that it should be out in September, and we should be finalizing, picking a contractor probably, you know, right around mid-September. So it's not too far off the original schedule, I think we lost a month or two, but it's still going forward. So it's basically pretty close to being on time and on budget, still.
Jim, can I ask a question on the EDIC wanting to fund an update of that study? I don't know whether it's been expressed or not, but Doug said something very wise there, that there are too many groups already working on housing, and nothing happens. Nobody's doing anything, they're working on housing. So decisions aren't being made. And my feeling is, another study is just going to further muddy the water, when we've got what Judy Barrett already said needed to be done, which is the accessory apartment bylaw. So is there a sense of frustration, and this is just one more way of frustration being expressed, that, well, if we get an update, then everything's going to be solved?
Well, it's not only EDIC, the CPC is also pushing for this study, so, you know. I voted against it, I'm just...
I just wondered what was motivating.
We'll find out.
Okay.
So, I mean, obviously, there's something...
I'm sorry, Paul, through you, Mr. Chairman, Paul, is there a vote of the committee, the CPC, to endorse that?
To do what?
To endorse.
To, to join with the EDIC, to...
I don't think there was a vote per se, there was a discussion on it. But it wasn't clear who was going to pay for it, who was going to deal with it.
Their chairman comes to our meetings, the EDIC, and says so. So that's what I'm reporting. I don't know about a vote, but that's...
This goes against one of the tenets of that housing study to begin with.
It was a little confusing to me, because at one point, they said the information was in a report, it just should be in tabular format. Now we're talking about updating the basic information, so that takes a little bit more than just re-presenting the information.
The census is 2020.
So it's, it's a little, not very clear.
The census information, there are, there are two, there are interim estimates, which are estimates, not, you know, census. Whatever. I'll find out, I'll talk to Judy, she's a friend. She's in the board with me.
Okay, now, the next...
I have another question. And this goes back to our committees. I'm sorry, but, well, we're supposed to be joining with the Conservation Commission as a subcommittee, and do you know, have you been contacted as to whether they have appointed members to their subcommittee? Because we've got ours in place, but, have you heard anything, Brian?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, they have, and I can't remember their exact names, but I did have a conversation with Jen Kaye, and they have appointed their committee members. So I guess I should get with Jen, let her know that you folks have made your subcommittee, and get you together.
Okay.
We'll do that this week.
Okay. I won't open my mouth again.
No, that was a good point. I mean, we're, I was kind of trying to get beyond that town meeting, but that's, that's a very good point. The next thing is, Brian's going to go, we, as you know, we've had several meetings regarding the accessory apartment bylaw, we had a meeting, we've had two or three, we've had a joint meeting with the, with the zoning board, and specifically on it, and plus, we had a meeting where we invited all the town meeting members to come, if they wanted to have comments on it, and we, a lot of them did come, well, some of them did come. And Brian's collected a lot of their thoughts, and is going to review it for us right now, and we're going to take it away.
We didn't put copies of the bylaw, the draft bylaw, in your package for you. It was out in the pile we've already given you.
I think they've all got it about 10 times already, so...
I think, I think the big picture items, I'll try to go through with you right now. One of the things that they have come up, the discussions have come up with, was a limit on the lot size. We can do that analysis, you know, I think there was a discussion with regards to 7,000 square foot lot, 10,000 square foot lot. Before we move forward with a minimum lot size, I'd like to hear from the board, yes, no, we, I don't need a vote or anything like that, but at least a little discussion, which way you want to head on.
I have, I didn't, wanted to discuss it with our board, I didn't want to bring it up at the joint meetings on this, but I have a feeling, I'd really like to take a quick study to see how, what the impact of this does. It might just totally eliminate it. I, I think in the areas where we, there may be no lots in Falmouth Heights or Maravista, where we could possibly do this, if we put that kind of restriction on it. So I think we need to think carefully about that, and I'd like to have Brian or go through those, go to the Falmouth GIS, draw a circle around the area, say, these are the areas where, where it could be impacted, and see how many lots are bigger than that. And I think, I don't think you'll find any, or you'll maybe only find one or two, but that's my, that's just my anecdotal thing, I'd like to see some hard numbers before we make a decision on that. Yes, Mark?
Just to review, and for my own edification, what was the driving force behind wanting to cap? Does anybody recall?
Behind what?
Wanting to cap the lot size.
Just their general intuition that it's a bad idea.
It's a bad idea because of intensity on a lot, or...
I think it's, the primary concern was the intensity on a lot, and the parking was just going to be too much.
But on the other side of the equation, we're trying to find ways to do this, not to stop from doing it. And I think that this is one of those, I want to wait till we have judgment on it, but the last time we did this, we put so many rules on it, it doesn't happen.
Right.
And I think we, if we keep going down that road, we'll be right back to the same spot.
That needs to be avoided.
And that's, but we had to listen, we heard the comment, and we're going to look at some numbers.
And I, I think we covered a lot of those concerns when we discussed the number of bedrooms that are by right, the lot coverage that's allowed in a, in a district. And if you can fit enough space for vehicles on a lot without increasing or going over the, the limit, why not? I don't, I don't see where that's a problem. I have a friend that owns seven vehicles, and he's got them on his lot, and he's allowed to do it by right. He's not exceeding his lot coverage. So I thought we answered a lot of these questions in this...
And I keep coming back to it, you know, if you have room for, if you have a two-bedroom house, and you have room to make it a four-bedroom house, and it doesn't exceed the 20% lot coverage, and your septic system is sized the right size, all we're really saying is you're putting in a stove. I think a lot of these people don't want this to happen, and they're looking for reasons to stop it, I think that...
And I get a lot of feedbacks, and I'm talking about this a lot, there's a few people that I hear from that are adamantly against it, but the majority that I've spoken with are much in favor of it. And when we exclude an area like Maravista, because it has small lots, and we think about the fact that we've just asked these people to pay for sewerin, and if this can help them get some relief, I think we should still consider it until we run up against a brick wall, because I think it could be important for a lot of people over there.
Well, and as Paul Murphy stated, he only gets about six requests a year for, for these types of permits.
That's in Dartmouth, right?
Yeah, in Dartmouth. So I don't think we're opening up any floodgate on this at all. I think we're going to give relief to people that can, can use the relief.
And if we had to, we could consider a cap per year. I drew arbitrarily through a number 50.
I mean, we've had building law attorneys.
Yeah. So if we're concerned that it's going to get, maybe that's the way we can address this, it's going to be a runaway train, which I don't believe it is, then we could simply put a cap on it.
Well, I mean, through you, there's other mechanisms that are already set in the bylaw that will vet, instead of eliminating a whole section of town, there are mechanisms that are going to do exactly... that are going to do exactly the same thing.
Right, I agree, Mark, we are just listening, we're just commenting on, on the, you know, the comments that were brought forward.
The numbers, we have some numbers that will say...
We'll have it. What, next, Brian, what else we got?
I'll run some numbers, 10,000 square foot lot and a 7,500 square foot. And I'll look at a, a cap. The other kind of threshold question here is a special perimeter by right. Where do you want, where do we want to head with that? For the, right now, this, if you're in a detached structure, a garage, a barn, whatever, it'd be a special permit through, now the board appeals. But there's a lot of angst out there about making the whole thing a special permit. I think I know where this board wants to head with that, but I want, I need you to, I need you to discuss that, so I have a fairly good idea. Right now, it's a plan review for the board.
The, there's no dispute at all about keeping a separate building as a special permit. I think everybody, 100% of those I spoke with, want to see all of it be special permit, and that flies in the face of what we are attempting to do. I like the way we have it, that we stay without it, without in-your-house being a special permit, because what are we really doing here? Nothing. We've got site plan review, which means, and it's also spelled out, that it has to look identical to a single-family house, so you've got the aesthetics taken care of under that. If it's on a septic system, well, you have to do the Board of Health, do they have time, do they have place for a reserve system? Is it all covered safely with the Board of Health? So, I don't really see that there is a problem, but what's happening is that the comments are, well, okay, you're going to have too many of them, we're going to become overcrowded as a town, and we need to have it looked at as a special permit.
What I heard, too, a part of it, was the people that are going to be moving into these places, and you can't control tenants or people who buy a, a single-family home. You don't have any say in purchases of houses and how they behave, other than if they do something outrageous, you call the police, or some official that has some jurisdiction over whatever is being done to annoy you. I, I just found that that was something that we don't have an answer for.
John?
I think the tenant answer is, the tenant's going to be living in your house.
Right.
Who's going to be more annoyed than the person that owns the property?
Right.
Who's going to have more control over the site?
And our goal is to bring in more people, and if you take a look at our local comprehensive plan, that's been approved by town meeting, it says if we are going to have growth in this town, it's going to be in our village centers and courts. I mean, that is, that is what, that's the instruction the town meeting has sent to us, and they've approved it. They've also talked about our housing goals and policies have been approved by town meeting, and we're marching down those orders, and so, these might be groups that are trying to take us in another direction, and I think we're really trying to follow things that have already been approved by town meeting, at least that's the way I think.
The other concern, too, was that with a special permit, a butters are notified, and with a site plan review, with the way we've got it, that doesn't come into play. And I think they want a forum for people in the neighborhood to, to voice their concerns, and I understand that. But here again, somebody could buy a piece of property and move in with five, 10 kids, or it could be a single person that has five or six roommates. I mean, you can't control that.
Well, you can take four boarders.
Yeah.
And their girlfriends can have a car.
Right.
Or girlfriends or whatever.
Yeah.
I was talking to a tenant today that's looking one of our apartments, and just for the hell of it, heck of it, I asked him what, what else they're looking at, and they started describing to me apartments and houses that I know are, I mean, the, the price range was, they can't be excess, they can't be affordable, because I know the price range, and they were talking about parts of town where, oh yeah, we looked at this, we looked at this, there's a ton of these things that are illegal all over town, and it's, you know, and there's a whole submarket on it, and no one's, we need to get this under control, and I think, I think if we brought this forward, made it so that the ones of the right size could do it, and then there could be some real enforcement on the ones that aren't.
And Doug has brought it up before, that it is a safety issue, because you do have places that are illegal, that aren't up to code, and that, that can be a real issue.
So, I think we're pretty stuck on our, no special permit. You got, everyone pretty much on board on that?
I agree. The impression I get with a special permit is that some members of the zoning board of appeals want to have a special permit, because it's in their purview to conduct a special permit. I think that's the kind of thinking I got from someone in the discussion at the meeting, they wanted to, to control it, whereas we're looking at a by-right issue, so we don't have to get into that whole process.
I, I feel that there's two different roles. I, I think that they are a board of relief, and we're a board of policy, and I think that they're trying to create policy here. I mean, I think at some point, they're doing, they're not, it's not their job, they, you know, they're, they are the zoning board of appeals. Okay, and that's, I think that they, they feel, they're, they're, they feel it's a little bit more policy. I understand they're attached to it, but I think we've got to move it forward.
By rewriting this bylaw, do we not assign who the special permit granting authority is?
For the detached structure, the board of appeals.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so that is always it, period, because the city attached structure...
It was the planning board, and at their joint meeting, it was agreed to change to the...
Oh, I wasn't there, so, I'm sorry, I was speaking without knowledge here.
In the, in the discussions between the two boards, it was agreed, board of appeals should be the special permit granting agency for the detached structure.
Are we still site, do site plan review?
Mm-hmm, okay. Because one of the things we were trying to do is to decrease the cost to the permit applicant by having us do the special permit and the site plan review.
At the same time, but we, we passed on that one. Right there, Pat, snooze, you lose.
Oh, well, I liked my snooze.
The takeaway I got from the joint meeting was, the zoning board was all about control, the difference of control of a special permit versus a site plan review. In both circumstances, control is exercised by the conditions made by the associated board. So, a site plan review effectively can, can condition the heck out of something that might be questionable, but you can still do it by right. So, I hope their anxiety with regard to, if I read the board correctly, their issue with control would be satisfied by the ability for this board to provide adequate safeguards through conditioning. And that's, that's, I've, I was of that same mindset until I started, you know, reading more about site plan review, what the powers are, and things like that. So, you know, it's all about conditions set in the site plan review.
One other concern they had was enforcing, and how that happens. And we've talked about the affidavit that gets sent out, whether it's worth a tax, or some other, can you pick?
And there was concern, but we're going to modify the language. If there is a violation, we're going to give them time to cure, we're just not going to take it away.
Yes, that was one of those technical items.
Right, there's a couple of smaller items that we, we all agreed to, so there was some discussion. And there was also in 24216...
Eliminate J.
Eliminate J, so we had, there were some other things that have been cleared up, that we, we agreed to quickly, that, I just don't want to slough over, but they were, they're things that Brian's going to change in the next draft.
And then, if I might, there was a discussion of the 50% of principal dwelling?
Yeah, that's my next thing on the list, it's in my mind there, there was sort of a floating numbers out there. Ken made a good point, that, you know, 50% of a floor of the principal structure, well, that means you're equal, everybody is accessory, so if it's...
It's half, though, isn't it, though? I didn't think his point made sense.
It would be 100% if it was equal.
Yeah, I, I disagreed with him on that.
In other words, let's say you had a, a house of 1,600 square feet. You can have an 800 square foot accessory apartment and an 800 first, square foot residual.
Okay, so, inside the same structure...
Right, you get some issues. So, that was got bandied about, we never really came up with a good number. Right now, the way it reads is, the accessory apartment shall have no more than two bedrooms, and a maximum of 800 square feet of floor area, or 50% of the floor of the principal's dwelling, whichever is less. So, there's this, you know, scenario where you have a house around that square footage, which would make the accessory and the residual not really accessory. So, let's just say for the sake of argument, what would be a more satisfactory number? I heard 40%, I wrote down, but...
But, but keep in mind, the lot coverage, the bedroom size, the setbacks are already in place, they could make the four-bedroom house and just not put a stove in it.
You're, you're no longer, if you have a 1,600 square foot house, you could split it in half, essentially, in two parts, according to the bylaw, and that is something to think about. If I have a 2,000 square foot house, you know, whatever, but once you get down to that level, like a ranch somewhere, you're no longer really accessory as defined, because you're a legal member. So, I need, I need to finesse that a little bit, and maybe talk, and talk to the board here a little bit about what you think, nothing etched this down. 800, either just make it a limit, 600, 700, 800 square feet and call it a debt, or try to find a percentage out there that, that sort of works. Right now, I have a good answer.
Are there any out there?
Right now, accessory, you're 30% of the principal's dwelling.
That's kind of the number that I...
We can go back to that.
That mirrors what's in our bylaw.
We can go back to that, so if I had a 1,600 square foot house, I could have a 480 square foot accessory apartment.
So, then it becomes a one-bedroom, I, you know, that might be a good point, if that helps them get behind this.
30%?
I, I don't, I'm not opposed to it, because I, I think that's more or less the spirit. I used to always say 30% whenever, publicly, whenever we, I read it, the 30% would cut my mouth, and Pat would already ask to correct me, no, it's 50, so, what do you, rest of the guys think about that?
Well, I think that's a valid point, when you put that 1,600 square foot house scenario.
Should be, should be a little one-bedroom addition, and that's all you really need in a small house, and it should accomplish our goal, and if it gets this to move forward with their support, instead of opposing it, I think that's a good move.
Captures the controls of parking and what they like that, too, by the size of the one part.
And if you have a four-bedroom house, one room becomes a bedroom, the other becomes...
I would rather see 40%, I think 30% is too tight. You have to have a pretty big house to get to 800 square feet if you're 30%.
Well, it's still a good number.
Which gets you to a two-bedroom. I'd much rather see 40%. If we're going to go percentage, otherwise, everything's going to be a one-bedroom or a studio, and I think 40% is a better number. There's still a lot of control.
You know, I was thinking through that whole thing, we were at 50%, and one of the members of the zoning board of appeals said 40, and it was like, taken out of the air without any justification for it, and going to 30, I would agree, is really, really low. I don't know what the difference between 40 and 50, there is no basis, it's just a guesstimate, I imagine, but 30 is way, way too low.
I think the 30 was thrown out by the zoning board, at least initially, to have some parity with what exists in the bylaw presently with regard to accessory.
They'd like to keep the same bylaw in place, is what they would like to do.
Yeah, but, but, I mean, just to make that point, I think the 30 is there, and actually, I would, my personal opinion, I would go 49, because then you meet the percentage requirement of being subservient to the principal, and you still have that cap.
Brian, is there anything that we could, when we're running some of these numbers, we could get a look at what the difference between these two, or, so we make it based on real, instead of just drawing a number out of a hat, actually having some statistics with it?
Well, I think 40, any number that's less than 50 is going to make the accessory subservient to the main apartment, so I think...
Well, that's pushing it, though. It's not really in the spirit of the conversation.
I think 49 is kind of a, I'm all set with 40, if the rest of you will go with that, if you want to compromise on 40.
I think you want to go 40.
40 is a much better number. You want this to work.
Yeah. Forty it is.
How about 49.5?
No, no, no.
Going once.
Forty it is.
9. All right, so, that, that's fine.
I think 40.
So, you would, you would need a 2,000 square foot house to get an 800 square foot.
So, I think there's two other reasons why the ZBA was pushing to keep the special permit. One is the notification to a butters, and the other one is the fact that if there's a problem, you can take away that special permit. We have the fact that we have the restored a single, single family, is sort of our version of taking away that special permit, I don't know if we emphasized that enough.
And they have to have, we have a control that isn't in place, well, I guess they are as a control, they, they're supposed to be inspected every year, or controlled by, by some agency, and we're going to have it done by an affidavit by the owner. So, there is...
We took the affidavit out of that file.
Yeah, I thought so, too.
There's no affidavit.
No longer, for enforcement, or for monitoring.
Right, that we, it's, you know, I don't recall seeing the language about an affidavit here, I thought we need to eliminate that. Help me.
Don't remember that.
No, I know we remember...
I thought we kept it to seven months and the affidavit, and we said that we would consider temporary, granting them a temporary easement, what's the word for that?
Relief.
Temporary leave if they had to go away for a year or something.
Right, I have the process for, in paragraph three, under requirements, we want a process for relief, and, you know, a domicile, sort of definition there.
I think...
In case, you, you have to be away for more than seven months, you make it your dorm, it's your domicile.
Right.
But if it had to be away for more than a year, you wanted a, a process for relief. But I, the affidavit we took out of the town of Harwich's example, but I thought in our final version here, we, we took that out.
I thought it was still in.
I think that was one of Mr. Mintz's suggestions.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'll take it back. Affidavit show me this, but it ain't really kosher. Never mind, I can't, I just...
Had me going there, Brian.
It's right there at the end, Brian, there it is. Okay, got it, okay, yes, there's an affidavit, and then...
So, do you, do you want to make revisions and bring this forward, so we can publish a new draft?
Oh, yes, I just wanted a discussion tonight before I move forward on some of the analysis sections and changes, I don't want to make them a...
No, I think you've got good direction to go ahead and make the change.
That's why we have these discussions. So, the big thing is, keep the special permit, if it's a accessory, a detached structure...
Right, we're all set with that.
Took a look at who gets left out, if you make a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, or 7,000, 500 square feet, and we'll look at 40% as your, as a threshold, 800 square feet or 40% of the principal, whichever is less, and we'll go from there. The rest is kind of cleanup stuff, agent plays, you know, domicile, process for relief, but the, but the minimum lot size, the special permit, you know, so there's other things, took items like...
I would suggest that the 10,000 is maybe not a good use of your time, because I think they were willing to say we were down to around six or seven. I mean, I thought that's where our discussion was going.
Well, I don't think it's going to be all that difficult to do, I've discussed with Brian and the statistics on how I would do it, I think it's a pretty quick exercise.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, well, our GIS folks are pretty loose-banged. I want to, I mean, then, I...
But, I mean...
As long as it's not a lot of work for somebody.
It isn't, it, it isn't, you can go on the GIS map, you can draw the area you want, say, give me all the houses, export it to Excel spreadsheet, and sort it by lot, by lot size, and have the answer in 10 minutes.
Okay.
That's, that's the vision that I saw, so we could do it by both that 10,000 and 7,000, and have a meaningful discussion to see how many we just eliminate, do we, I think we're going to, if we do 10,000, I'm going to think we're going to eliminate 90% of the houses that are the areas where we need it, so that's why I'm afraid to just accept that, because I think it, it's just something they'll stop altogether.
Well, if that's the case, maybe we should consider looking at 5,000 or 4,000, I mean, what would be, if there is a real minimum?
Well, yeah, there might be, I don't know, we can keep looking for reasons, or just let the lot coverage ratios fall into place. And lot, we, we've got protection in there for site plan review, design review, lot coverage ratios, we're not changing, we're not changing the board of health, things we've, there's a lot of safety in place.
Oh, I agree, but I'm just saying, if we're, if we're in the middle of doing it, because there was a strong feeling from the ZBA that there should be a minimum, so I don't know if we should explore a real, a lower minimum, or whatever, what do you guys think? Well, let's wait on the numbers.
Yeah, let's wait and see.
Okay.
Keep that as an open item?
Sure.
Mark?
Through you, Chairman...
Through you, Chairman, about, let's see, the health department. Was there going to be any research done on that?
Yeah, I have to check with Dave and with John, or probably with Dave, about, you know, the.
Dual chamber.
The dual chamber issue. You know, if they have to, they have to.
Yeah, but that's the purview of the health department.
That's the health, that's the health regulations, right?
Yeah. Well, if, I guess it's whether or not he considers it to be duplex, if it's a 40% of the size, if it's subordinate, maybe he won't say that it's a duplex.
Yeah. Well, my hope that, you know, if we're tearing up tanks and spending tens of thousands of dollars, this thing just got real hard. I think the argument they're saying, well, you're going to have two kitchens and two laundries, you still have the same amount of people. I mean, ideally, we want to have, you could have more people in a, you could really maximize out if you wanted to do, to put in, you know, two people in each bedroom in a, in a house, you could really pack them in without even making an accessory apartment, you could really have a lot of people. There's no control on that, so they got to balance that decision and see what's best for our town.
Well, they'll have to tell us.
But I understand, I understand their reasoning, you know, you're two legal dwelling units, if one's, just like the heating systems and everything else, to a town. So I got, yeah, I have my little check with Dave. And again, that would be, right now, you're saying coastal pond over lay districts and water resource protection districts, that's about 70% of the town.
Right.
So it's bigger than what I, it's a big one. But that was a tough. Okay, I think I have enough to get you guys going by, I see the warrant closes September, no, the warrant closes January 7th, okay.
April.
Yeah, I got a lot of pushback when we changed last week. I had a couple of people come up to me that were really disappointed that we didn't keep it, you know, for this town meeting, but obviously, when we're making changes like this, there has to be time to re-vet it. Right, I just publicly saying.
Six months.
Right. But we, you know, something we've been working on a long time, we want to get it right.
Somebody anxious to get a special permit there?
Well, I don't want to, let me put it this way, that there's somebody that said there's an awful lot of illegal ones out there that are trying to fall into place, and they're all hoping this gets done quickly so they, they're not sitting in limbo. That's what I heard.
That's another good point, that we should have some kind of, will they be able to retroactively come in and fall under this?
Yeah. Absolutely, that's the intent.
Trying to get people to actively pursue this.
All right, well, we'll get to go, once you're going on that, we might have it for the 30th. So.
Moving on, general correspondence. There's a letter that I have to read.
We have one letter, May 26, 2016, from the Affordable Housing Committee to James Fox, Chairman of the Planning Board. Dear Mr. Fox, the Affordable Housing Committee feels very strongly that the town's housing production plan be updated as soon as possible. We are aware of the staffing constraints within the town that may have delayed the update of the previous plan that expired in 2014. We intend to submit an application to the Community Preservation Committee, CPC, requesting that funds be authorized to hire a consultant to update this plan. Since the deadline for the CPC application is August 15, 2016, for spring town meeting, we are operating in a very tight timeframe. We wish to work collaboratively with the Planning Board and are requesting your support in our application process. We look forward to hearing from you with your earliest competing. Sincerely, Kimberly Khan, Affordable Housing Committee Chair.
So we let them do it and work with them, that's all they're asking, right?
What are they looking to update? Tell me the name of that.
The housing production plan. And that's something that was the last update expired in 2014?
It's a five-year plan, like case in point, 20, the 28 master plan. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a master plan for the town as far as, it uses all the assessment information that Ms. Barrett is putting together and did put together in the housing demand study. And, you know, the, the largest advantage to having a approved plan by DHCD is it gives 40B, or you have more control over 40B projects than you would not otherwise. If it's a poor plan, you can contest it, and if you have a housing production plan, you are in a better position in front of the hack.
Even though you're not getting to 10%, you can argue.
Right, as long as you have a plan.
Well, I guess they're going to fund it, and we might as well see what they come up with and see what it says, huh?
Sure. I think they were asking for support, because the last time that the plan was updated, it was done by the planning board, or the planning, planning staff.
Right, and right now, you know, as you know, we're down, there's one person. And these plans, you have to reach one half of 1% of your year-round housing goal, which is about 72 units a year. That will allow you for a one-year hiatus, you met your regional need.
Right.
The equivalent of reaching your 10%. But it's only for one year. It's the succeeding year, let's say we met it in 2016, then you have met your regional need for the year of 2017. But you have to get 72 units on the SHI a year. And I think the, 2011, there were 63 building permits, so it's for new single-family homes. So I understand that they want to have it, that's fine. Just like on the hazard plan, the FEMA plan, and some of the other plans, we've entered them out now, town meeting has authorized those monies, it's fine. But we just, we simply don't have the wherewithal to update it this year. We might get to it in a year or two. I'll be returning.
Future agenda items.
I had said something to you, when we had the meeting at the library on the accessory apartment by law, two people from the Oak Bluffs Planning Board joined us, and I was sent an invitation that it was as a board, we could go and join the All Island Planning Board meeting at the end of September. Well, I don't think we'd all want to do it as a board, but the idea being that we all have more or less the same kinds of problems that we're dealing with. And I think, Doug, you were intrigued, because they were getting grant monies. Well, where were they looking for that? So I'd like to bring this up for a discussion with the board, say, on the 30th, and see what we feel about maybe sending a couple of representatives, as they did, to see how we're handling accessory apartments. And just have this as more of a discussion here. I have no more information than that, and the date, which I can't tell you right now, it's at the end of September. So just to bring that up.
Sounds good.
Put it on, we have to get it on before the end of September, I guess.
Well, I was thinking, if we can put it on next meeting, just to, it shouldn't be a terribly long discussion to find out what we feel about it, and we might want to go if we decide we want to go in that direction.
That'd be interesting.
Get it on the agenda first. We'll get it on the agenda first, then we'll discuss it.
All Islands meetings, got it?
I think that's what it's called, the All Island Planning Board.
Travel costs picked up by the planning department?
Right.
We're not allowed on a state travel.
Yeah, it's probably fine, we have a travel.
Maybe they'll treat us well. We treated them well when they came here. Next meeting, August 30th.
Yes, and you'll have a very busy agenda.
Everyone available?
I believe same start time.
I might not be available. Conflict with another meeting.
Isn't that the night of the legal woman vote? I think the legal woman vote is going to interview you and the other candidates for selection. Yes, they are.
Is it a TV interview or the forum?
It's the forum of the library.
I understand it's going to be the library.
Yeah.
Rather than most of our schools.
Wish you luck. Don't miss it. That concludes our agenda items.
I move adjourned.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Aye.